Are we good to go?
Good evening and welcome to the October 2025 meeting of the City of Tuscaloosa Planning and Zoning Commission. Any written comments sent to staff or forwarded to the commission directly. At this time, I'd like to introduce our staff. We have Mr. Jimbo Woodson, Deputy City Attorney, Michael Garner, City Engineer, Zach Pons, Director of Planning, Leo DeCoin, Principal Planner. There are nine members of the Planning Commission, all who are appointed by the mayor for staggered terms with the exception of the City Council Representative, who is appointed by the City Council. I ask commission members to introduce themselves and state their occupation. Begin with Hornsby.
Anne Hornsby, Attorney.
Raven Howard, Councilwoman, District Two.
Steven Rumsey, Business Owner.
Dana Prince, Attorney.
Portia Clark, 311 Manager.
Jim Harrison, General Contract.
Bill Wright, Business Owner. There were sign up sheets located outside for public comment. Four speakers are allowed to speak in favor of a petition and four speakers are allowed to speak in opposition of a petition. All speakers will have the maximum of five minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. Nice procedures. The commission will take up items in the order of our final agenda. The commission will initially receive a presentation from the staff as to the details of the agenda item. Additionally, we may hear certain matters involving the same property such as an annexation and a zoning matter concurrently, although we will take separate votes on each matter involving the same property. After the staff presentation, I'll then call upon the petitioner to present their case. The petitioner will have a maximum of ten minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. At the conclusion of the petitioner's remarks, we'll then call upon any party in order of sign up who desires to support the petition. Thereafter, we'll call upon any party in order of sign up that those who oppose the petition. When it's your turn for comment, please introduce yourself, say your name and address to the commission to provide your remarks. Any written comments have been included into the record. After receiving the remarks of those who oppose the petition, the petitioner will have the opportunity to respond to those objections. Any rebuttal will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. If the petitioner presents any new information in response to the objections, the commission will allow those who oppose the petition the opportunity to respond to the new information only. Any response will be limited to two minutes unless the commission votes to allow a longer time. During the course of this presentation, you may be interrupted by any member of the commission for clarification or additional information. Such interruptions will not reduce your time. Once the commission members are satisfied that we've received all relevant information, I will close for further discussion by the public, at which time the commission members will discuss the matter and then vote. After the vote, you are free to leave. These proceedings are video recorded and broadcast live. All in-person public comments should be made at the podium into the microphone. Jurisdiction. In all matters pertaining to the following items, this commission serves as the final authority. Subdivisions located within city limits, subdivisions located outside city limits within the city's planning jurisdiction, developments with special district and approval letters for developments in historic district buffer zones. As to all remaining agenda matters including annexations, rezonings, planned developments, and street vacation, this commission serves as the recommending body to the City Council. In that regard, our decisions are in the form of a recommendation to present to the City Council, and the City Council will make the final decision on those matters. Subdivision approval requires the affirmative vote of six members of the Planning Commission. All matters which are recommendations to the City Council require a majority vote for an affirmative recommendation. At this time, I would ask that any members of the commission have any conflicts of interest as to any agenda matters before us tonight. If so, please state for the record. Having heard none, I would ask the staff to confirm on the record that proper notice has been given to all parties in interest as required by law as to all matters for this commission tonight.
It has.
Thank you. Okay, there are small changes to the agenda tonight. The following agenda items have been modified. S-9025, the resurvey, the second resurvey of lots two and two A, Steve Tucker subdivision, is requesting to withdraw. Do I hear a motion and a second to move this item on the agenda if the case is requesting to be withdrawn?
Motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Have you talked to the accuser yet?
Yes.
I'm accusing him of hackberry.
Okay, turn your microphone.
I'm sorry, I thought I had. I'm accusing him of hackberry.
Okay, thank you. Okay. With that, we will begin with approval of the minutes. As the Planning and Zoning Commission has received the synopsis of the September 2025 meeting, I move that we dispense with the reading of the minutes, same unless there are any deletions, additions, or corrections. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. It's approved.
Good evening, Commission. Starting off tonight with the consent agenda, we have one item, S-9225. We did not have anyone sign up out front for this one.
Okay. I think I know one has signed up to speak for or against for this consent agenda item, S-9225, Danner Place. All those who say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, moving into our cases requesting to withdraw, we have S-9025. We did not receive any public comment. We did not have anyone sign out up front for this one.
Okay. So, S, Commission, S-9025 has withdrawn. No reason to vote, is there?
Mr. Woodson, do we need a vote on the withdrawal?
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of approving the withdrawal of S-9225, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
All right, moving into unfinished business, we have a companion case, that is River Bluff Subdivision. This is an annexation and subdivision, A and 1525 and S-7025. You first saw this one in August. It's located south of 3685 River Bluff Drive. Starting with the annexation, you can see we're just north of the Black Warrior River here, off of the new McRice Ferry Road. You can see that lot today is vacant. And you can see that area in the blue hatch is the area to be annexed. They'd like to annex into city limits for City of Tuscaloosa infrastructure, and this is identified in framework as a primary expansion area, priority one. Here are department comments on that annexation. And here is that revised plat. We'll get into the detail here as we move into the subdivision. Twenty-five lots on 40.8 acres. It has been reduced to 24 lots after the legal notice was submitted. You can see that lot again today is vacant. You can see that plat with contours without. And now moving into the comparison, we have the October plat on the left, or excuse me, August plat on the left, the current plat on the right. I can see there's been a lot of changes, particularly in this area over here. Let's see. This area over here compared to that August submission. Zooming in, you can see, starting in the northeast corner, those kind of over one acre lots in the middle, some half acre and larger lots as we move into the northwest, and then those larger acre, close to an acre lots as you move towards the river. We do have two variance requests. We did receive one public comment in August. We received a second one for tonight's meeting. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering on the marriage request?
We have no objections to those requests.
Thank you.
And, Commission, I'm sorry, I forgot to point out, they did do a 40-foot minimum build line for these three lots here against the subdivision to the north. Just want to make sure that was pointed out.
Petitioner.
How many lots were in the August proposal? How many?
It was 31 lots, one of those being an open space lot.
Lot 31, 22.
Twenty-three. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Paul Burkhalter, here representing the developer. We've met with the Homeowners Association for Acadian Place, and actually Doug Simpson is here, if you have any questions for him. Worked out all the issues that they had. We did do the 40-foot minimum building line that they requested and reduced the number of lots to meet the requirements for that River Buff development. We have talked with them about becoming part of the Homeowners Association, and we are going to adhere to their restrictive covenants.
And what, what did you say?
We're going to restrict to their, we're going to adhere to their restrictive covenants. So they've got some covenants set up for that particular area. So I guess the only thing that we need to add, I did talk with Josie York, who is the adjacent owner to lot number one before the meeting, and we're going to give him a 20-foot minimum building along that lot. So that's in addition to the 40 that we've already shown, just to, you know, just, we're just trying to make sure we have enough building area on lot number one. So if there's any questions, I'll try to address them, or if there's any comments from Doug or anybody else.
So you're going to add a 20-foot onto that number?
Yeah, it'll be a 20-foot side yard, really, for that lot.
Well, I applaud y'all for getting together, and, I mean, from a developer's standpoint, you took a lot hit, but you made some improvements for the adjoining neighborhoods, so I think everybody should be pretty pleased with.
Yeah, well, it's like I told Doug at the meeting when we had with HOA, you know, we want to, we don't want to do anything to impact the existing development.
Sure.
We just want to add to it.
Great, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Any questions for the petitioner?
No. Need to write a book on this about your goodwill.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody sign up to speak?
Yes, we have Acadian Place HOA has signed up, Mr. Doug Simpson, I think.
Good evening, Commission. I just want to thank you in your efforts in August. I'd also like to thank Paul and the Dominion Group for being able to come in. We had very fruitful discussions. It wasn't always easy, but the discussions did go as well as planned, so thank you for your efforts in August to enable us to suspend this until this timeframe. Also, with the adjacent, with the York family extending that to 20 feet for a side yard, I believe this will be a much better addition for Acadian Place as a whole. Look forward to having them as part of our HOA in the future. We've also hired an attorney to help navigate that in alignment with Dominion and Paul itself to kind of help navigate the mounds of legal discussions that we'll get into and how do we, I wonder if the right words, annex, but bring them on as our members of our HOA, but we look forward through this process. And again, thank you guys for your efforts.
Could you real quick name an address for the record?
Doug Simpson, 3625 River Bluff Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama. Thank you.
Chairman, next person, Mr. J.D. York.
My name is J.D. York, 3690 River Bluff Drive. I am the property that is adjacent to lot one, and we're satisfied. I'd like to thank Mr. Burkhalter for listening to our concerns and going from five lots to one right there. That's a big relief and expanding the minimum build line there for us. So we're in agreement, and yeah, everything looks good. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
That's it.
Well, this one worked out nicely. Anyone else care to speak for or against this petition request?
I'm concerned Mr. Burkhalter's going to run for mayor.
He's got Acadian voting, doesn't he? All right, since we're wrapping this up, let's get to the voting of this. All right, folks, our first is the annexation 1525, annexing 40.8 acres, okay, south of 3685 River Bluff Drive, in conjunction with S-7025. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Welcome to the city. Commission before us, we have S-7025, River Bluff subdivision, the 25 lots, 23 lots, and it has two variance requests, sub streets and public street frontage. Engineering has no issues with. We have a motion and a s-
Can we also add the 20-foot?
Okay. All right, fair. And we will add as a note for the record, the 20-foot minimum build line on lot, like one of the new addition.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Rumsey.
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
All right, moving into our cases to be heard, next up is an annexation request, that is A and 1825, annexing approximately one acre located at 4216, 4230, and 4040 Nickel Park Road. You can see pretty far north on Lake Nickel here, near the Sexton Bend cutoff and New Watermelon and Watermelon intersection. You can see that property, they are looking to annex portions of some properties to the east to annex their home into city limits. You can see that that boundary to be annexed in the blue hatch and existing city limits in yellow. They'd like to annex into city limits to go to city schools. This is identified as our secondary expansion area in framework. Here are department comments.
This is the one that's in the question.
And we did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Not yet, for me. Any questions for staff? All right, petitioner.
I have one little, I just want to ask Jimbo something. Okay, that's, we don't have lasso, is that not a lasso annexation?
No, a lasso will be where you go down that other road.
A road only, okay, all right, yeah.
Jonathan Grammer, 4040 Nickel Park Road, Tuscaloosa, 35406.
Gibson, Robert W., 4310, 4230, and 4216 Nickel Park Road, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35406.
So this is my uncle, he's allowing me to request that y'all annex that 20-foot strip across two of his parcels to get to mine.
Anexing across two different property owners.
Jonathan, is that, what, you own this parcel?
Yes, sir, the parcel that's inside, that contains the one acre, that's a 25-acre parcel that's mine, yes, sir. And when I built the house, I obviously annexed, or I mortgaged that one acre with the house. The rest of that land is not mortgaged with the house, so what I wanted to do was just annex that one acre that's mortgaged with the house into the city limits.
Are you, how are you doing this?
Are you doing this for school?
Yes, sir, I've got two at Rock Quarry Elementary and one at Northridge Middle School. And then, you know, just for reference, several years ago, if you look to the southeast, the parcels to the south of the one acre that's already in the city limits, south of the road, that's mine as well. When I bought that, it was 31 acres. It's not on the page there, but in that southeast corner, we annexed in one acre off of that 31 previously. So I was, you know, going to do the same thing on that one up there, on that 25-acre parcel. You can't see it on that map, but to the southeast, below where the key is for the map, there's one acre there that was annexed in several years ago, same thing, one acre off of 31. And when they, what they did to him was, when it was annexed in, they just assessed it at the courthouse as a separate parcel, obviously in the city limits, and broke it out from the larger 31-acre parcel. So I've got a 30 and then a one acre in the corner, and then that, that piece in the northwest corner, that 31, I bought it two years ago. It's about a two-acre parcel as well.
Staff, could y'all do me a favor? Would you, all right, we got one petitioner, we got two interested parties here. Can you somehow label the petitioner's property and then interested parties? Okay, that's, you're going, option. All right. Can you do a different color on the, on the interested party? The uncle?
Yeah, it's my uncle.
Okay.
So just to clarify, this part and this part is your uncle's?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
So you own the two, uncle owns the yellow and also the larger lot, too?
Yeah, yeah, he's got four parcels right there.
Why does the, why does the, that need to be annexed? I mean, can't you just annex your property? Have you given him an easement across it? You have to- It has to be contiguous.
We got to get for his one acre, yeah.
See the yellow piece in there? That's in the city limits, and to get that other square up there, you've got to touch that yellow and then keep it going until you touch his purple square up there. So that it's not that island? Well, it's, it's, well, island, or really, they're just in the PJ, we call those islands. But that's, that's kind of, I don't, you just don't want to annex your whole big blue block up there?
No, ma'am, I don't want to restrict all my land just to get that one acre and house in there.
You don't want what?
I don't want to restrict my full use of my property any more than I have to, so that's why I want to just get that one acre in there.
Who owns the parcel below the house, one right there?
That's a lot of people, a lot of heirs on that parcel, not my family.
Just hang on, hang on.
You what?
Hey, can you turn on your mic?
That's it. There's no other choice.
Staff? Hold on, hold on, let him talk.
Go ahead, question.
Yes.
This is me.
Here's, here's, here's the concern we have, obviously, Jonathan. I mean, we, that's a heck of a precedent, something like this, to this extent, and that's what we're concerned with.
What, what precedent does it set?
Well, I mean, look at it.
The strip annexation or just the one acre out of my 25?
Look at how, how you're going about getting that. I mean, going across two separate property, so.
Well, if we go back out to Watermelon Road, there's a strip annexation out there that goes from Highlands up to Decunningham Road. If we go over to the dam on Lake Nickel, we go out a strip along the road.
There are, there are, we have been trying to stop doing that, to be honest with you, capturing this property like this, so.
Staff?
Yeah, I mean, there's ways to remedy it in the sense of a subdivision, if you wanted to subdivide and get, you know, some of this property on, to actually make it a parcel.
So which one is it doing?
I don't know. It is best practice to annex in the whole property and not do this, but there aren't any regulations specifically related to it that we have.
So how, how does the, I mean, the uncle, I'm sorry, I forgot the name.
That's the uncle.
Gibson.
I mean, Mr. Gibson, I mean, how does that impact legally from taxation standpoint, that property that's now in the city?
It's assessed separately, and I get a separate tax bill for it.
But I mean, how in the heck, what's, what's the width of that annexation?
20 feet.
20 feet, so you got a 20 feet wide by, how long is that?
Let me look at the legal on it.
We do it while you're figuring it out, we always, sometimes we'll get variance requests for lot configurations or property for subdividing.
So from, from the one acre that's already in the city, that property analysis have, that strip running east-west across the south boundary is 315.62 feet, then it turns north and runs 441.47, then it runs west, 316.72, then it runs north, 6224, to hit my one acre.
What I was saying is that when we have a subdivision in the city, we always ground on crazy lot configuration. Basically, we're creating a crazy lot configuration and annexing the city.
Bill, is he, is he wanting just the yellow piece? Is that?
Right.
No, just the blue, the blue check. So annexing starting at the yellow piece and going this way.
But he owns the, right below it, too, but doesn't want to do that?
He owns the big one.
He owns the other.
And Mr. Gibson owns the two over here.
You know, you could clean it up a tad by just, just bringing that square down to where the, yeah, I mean, like I said, that's a tad, but at least it helps it a little bit.
Or why not go this way on this property he owns?
No, we're all the way.
Just do a little free acre lot or something, not this crazy thing.
So that's, so Jonathan Grammer is below that?
No, sir.
Could I clarify something for you?
Sure. I need to clarify.
In 2010, I petitioned to have my one acre, which is in the yellow there, which has the right-of-way to the property that's contiguous to the lake. All right, my brother-in-law, his father owns all of the land below there. The two one-acre parcels and next to it, to the east, that X belongs to his father. The rest of those two parcels right there also belong to them and his sister. All of the other four properties there belong to me. The reason that we requested to be annexed into the City of Tuscaloosa was to take advantage of the city school system because I have a grandson who needed to go to kindergarten, and thus, we didn't want to pass by two brand-new schools to go to kindergarten or ride a bus. So it was done in 2010.
And that's the yellow piece?
That is, that one, where the X is, is the property that we annexed into the City of Tuscaloosa in 2010. And the only request that they made or of us then was, were we requesting city services? And since it had, we were not. Now, his request, as it was presented to me, is to annex his one acre that has been previously subdivided from that property and mortgage for his, so he doesn't have to have a mortgage on his entire property, and for the purpose to send his children to city schools. No purpose other than that. And I don't know of anything that's changed over the years in the way of rules and regulations that would prevent that from being so. So from 2010, I believe it's exactly 2010, it may have been '09 or '11, but we have been there and we've enjoyed sending our children to, our grandchildren, excuse me, that live with us, to the city schools.
I don't, I don't think anybody has any objections to what your goal is. I think it's a issue, concern, trying to figure it out, how to make it work.
Yeah.
And it looks-
So the city's going to spend or elevate, that's one of the big elevate projects on Lake Nickel, and so the city's going to spend millions of dollars on upgrading Lake Nickel at some point, or hopefully, as a quality of life issue. Now, obviously, we'd like to grow the city, that, by annexing, it allows us to grow further, but you're saying that we're worried about the precedent because of these lines, right?
I figure it is.
The right-of-ways are getting us there, or the easements or whatever.
Zach, what, give me, give us some options, too. I'm giving you, I mean, I mean, seriously, what, what are other options?
I mean, you could tell them to-
Anexing the whole thing, which I'm-
Go back to the drawing board and we can work with them, go back to the drawing board and we can work with them outside of this. I can't think of anything off the top of my head that would make this work better unless, you know, I mean, they own all of this property up here, so there's ways to make parcels that are-
If I go off of, off of Nickel Park Road and just go up and grab it, you know?
So, so the Jonathan Grammer parcel, it's the bigger parcel, you do not want the whole thing?
No, sir. And we don't own, we don't own the parcels along the road frontage. That one, and then the one little triangle in the corner there, we, no, well, we don't own that either, but the one on the north side, yeah, we don't own that, so we can't follow the road like you're talking about.
What is, what is your fear about doing the whole parcel?
I just don't want to put any additional restrictions on the rest of my property that would come with being in the city limits.
Zach, draw, draw off of Nickel Park Road and grabbing the acre.
I'm going to have those restrictions on the one acre.
No, not that, that, or just you come off Nickel Park Road on the, or the other, right there, why can't we do something like-
Do something straight up there.
Something straighter, just cut it out that way. It wouldn't be much more-
You're saying that you'd become, you'd come in under R1 and you're worried about you might want to do something like R3?
This, this X right here isn't in city limits, so they couldn't-
Oh, you got to connect to city, you got to be touching, that's right.
And, all right, so Zach, if we, oh. Jimbo's told me before that because each and every property is different, and specifically different, that you really don't create a precedent, but are we, is there in any way creating someone's level of expectation? Jimbo's told me before that because each and every property is different, and specifically different, that you really don't create a precedent, but are we, is there in any way creating someone's level of expectation on a different case?
So, to answer that question, I'll use his example, I mean, he's using this, and, you know, I'm not for or against anyone in this room, but they're using this as the reason for this should be okay, because they were able to do it in two thousand ten. You didn't necessarily set a precedent in two thousand ten, but two thousand ten, this created that, and then now we're here, you know, fifteen years later, and, uh.
And, and that wasn't the first one that was done either, the ones I mentioned to Tim earlier, there's two or three others up there that have that twenty-foot strip to other places.
What about something like that right there, what they're drawing right there?
I must have missed that meeting, because I, I would have remembered.
That make it like that right, if you did something, you followed your property line to the south, like he has the red, and then went over to the eastern property line, like that right there, that would mean, I, I could stomach that, if that's what you're trying to do. Yeah, I think that at least makes it so non-looking.
And on the west, I guess it's the west side, we're talking about bringing that one out even with the property below it?
I'm saying do something like that little red square.
There, yeah, like that.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't think you gotta do that, just, but at least make the lots.
Logical.
Logical, looking, yeah, man.
It's not completely unprecedented in that that's how we got Mercedes Benz.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, I, I, I got no problem with, I mean, I think warming the city, but.
Not a good policy.
Yeah.
No, it's the county.
It's the county, right.
Until you get to the gate.
Yeah, so you can't, so the only way we're getting there is by virtue of him doing his, because he couldn't do his because he wouldn't be able to touch this bigger piece or the one across the street.
My, my parents annexed that twenty-foot strip from the lake property. That strip that goes from the lake property over, my parents did that for Uncle Robert and Alice when they annexed their one acre in.
Zach and y'all, man.
Go back and look at Watermelon Road and Lake Nickel Road on the other side by the dam, and you'll see more strips than just that one right there, so.
You're saying that we've done something like this?
Yes, sir, you go from Highlands over on Watermelon Road to the west, there's a strip up.
Okay.
Cummings Family Property.
I did that.
To get up there to Decunnam.
I did that.
And then there's an, but then you keep adding strips and you've suddenly got a.
Well, actually, that was two.
Tickerboard.
Two, two development.
Yeah, I remember, yes, sir.
So. My, my desire would be you go sit down in the staff or on the panel and try and say, I don't, I'm, I'm like.
Tim, it doesn't sound like the staff has an issue, there were no issues on that, it sounds like the commission has the issues, not the staff.
So we would be bringing it in in what, R one?
Would be R one.
The commission has the issues, but the staff is the best, they're the best working at it.
So, so, I'm trying to think of what, he would not be, so, if he wants to develop this property, he could probably be more dense, and he's afraid if he does more, that it'll, it'll cost him, right, so.
Mr. Rumsey, I have no plans to develop that property.
I'm just trying to think.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, it's timberland around me, it's gonna be like that as far as I'm, yes.
Listen, I'm all-rounder, I just realized I'm all-around.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna develop it, so.
The, the original owners of the property did so in sixteen hun, or eighteen hundred, about eighteen sixty-four, which would be his grandpa, his grandfather's grandfather's grandfather, my wife and them, and they've been in custody of most of this property and the city condemned or took forty acres of the original forty-four, the water supply for Lake Tus, uh, Lake Nickle. And in doing so, and that was in about nineteen fifty whatever, before the lake was built, uh, one of the springs that feeds that lake is on that piece of property that I own. And I have no, yes, I have absolutely no desire, and then the property behind us is another feeder spring that serves that lake. And as far as my family, my children, and my current grandchildren, we have absolutely no desire to see anything developed there. Uh, it's one of the reasons why we're doing this this way, I can go out and sit on my back porch and listen to the mockingbirds and watch hummingbirds and.
You understand it's in our best interest, I need to do it, we just don't want to meet ourselves in the road.
I, 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 I do, mister, I understand that, and the Cummings family and my wife used to work for them, and that was years ago, but I understand a good bit of how development and all that it wants to be.
So.
The, the reason for, it's, in my lifetime, it will not be developed.
Mr. Grammer, you seem to be upset just at the mere mention of trying to meet in the middle somewhere, is there, is there a reason for that?
No, ma'am.
Now, I will also say that this is a recommending vote, so, you know, y'all could vote on it and make your intentions clear as to what, you know, which way you're voting, and then ultimately, city council would be that decision on it.
In other words, we could toss responsibility on the council.
It is a, in the end, a council decision.
Well, we just, well, if we're gonna make, we're making comments, it needs to be obviously reported and passed to the council, just to say.
Yeah, exactly.
We have no objections with the annexation, we just want to make sure that this body going forward, I don't want to care what happened thirty, forty years ago, but in two thousand ten, that, we aren't, this body wasn't here.
That's right.
But we're trying to do things the more logical, I think, is our, is our goal, especially with annexations and with zonings and subdivisions, and that's my only thing, like, it could be this odd-looking subdivision, if we asked for that, you are in the city, I'd be like, heck no, yeah.
Another thing, so, this, uh. Maybe worth mentioning, even if you were to develop it, it's within the one mile of the drinking water basin, so you have to have one acre minimum lots. And, and subject tanks, uh, have, in other words, you don't have sewer, and you're not gonna have sewer up here for, for a while, well, it, it'll eventually get their problem. Thirty years, twenty, I, I don't know, where is it, at North River Yacht Club on the corner at Todd Ballmer's house?
There you go. All right. Any other questions for the petitioner?
So it doesn't matter what we do, it's going to the council.
It's going to council, but I mean, I think if, if, if anybody on this commission wants to, I guess, add a comment or thought for the council to consider from our perspective, and let them have it at, at their level and good luck.
My preference would, would be to see an alternative that was more in keeping with the things that we've suggested. I would feel much more comfortable voting yes, um, with a, with a plan that, or not a plan, I know, but, uh, a plan that, that was more in keeping with, um, the kinds of things we've been suggesting.
I think, yeah, I think we're on the comment, I, I think that's what we're gonna probably do, we're probably gonna pass it on the council with some comments, and then you'll have a chance to state your case in front of that body. But I think we, at the end of the day, I think we'd like to annex, you know, that's not the issue, it's not, either ours, we want you, but we gotta figure out what we think from this body makes some sense.
All right.
Anyone else care to speak for or against this petition request? I, I think it would, okay.
Kevin Hinkle, twenty-one oh seven Forest Lake Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, three five four oh six, I don't have anything to do with that, but it would seem that annexing that in the way he has it to benefit his children going to school, it would open up doors of opportunity for the property that he's going around to annex into the city, which could steamroll, 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 where you, you do create large developments for the city along Nickel Park Road, that's just an observation.
Enables that Deborah Neal track.
Yes, very much so, that's just an outsider's observation.
Yeah, Kev and I, you know, it's not that we don't want it, we, we do want it, we want that, we want the kids coming to school, we want, we, but there's some configuration issues, as you well understand.
That, that comment wasn't brought up, I just thought it would be good to add it in.
Thank you, Kevin, good point.
Let them shoot it down if they don't want it.
I guess I'd, I'd love to give A's input just briefly, what your thoughts might be, so the council can hear those or consider them, anybody, Mr. Rumsey, game?
I would, I, I'm kinda, I'm kinda with him on, on it opens up opportunities to, to spread the city and, and, and bring more kids' growth into District Three eventually, uh, that corridor, since we've got the new Watermelon, is it, what's the new extension called?
The Christchurch, yeah, I agree, it's, it's coming.
I mean, I'd like, of course, I, I mean, we'd like to see it in the city, we just, um, wanna make sure that we're doing things, or we do have a, a absolute brand-new plan, and we've been adhering to a lot more, um, they're not really strict, but they're more comprehensive and they're sort of more of course, I, um, in our new rules, and I would prefer not to see this kind of configuration regularly. But, and wish they would come back to something else with us.
You know, uh, I bet, I'm sure we have done things sort of similar to this, but the vast majority of annexations are in what I would say blocks. You know, we, we have a big city, you know, boundary, and then we have a block that's attached to it, that's the normal way we do annexations, and, uh, that's, in my opinion, the better way to do it. Looks more orderly and, um, so I, 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 I think a better plan needs to be presented if they come back to us, but then they want to go to the city, then. If they go to the city and the city does not allow it, do they have an opportunity to redraw it and come back to us? Okay. For the next meeting?
So rejection then create a sixth month?
I agree with Ms. Hornsby, I just, it, it's not that we don't want the annexation and not that we don't want the children to come to city schools, but I think it's, it's a logical request to ask for it to just be tidied up. I don't feel like that should be, I don't think that's that big of an ask, so I agree with Ms. Hornsby.
So, I'm not speaking for everyone on the council, but, um, I know that most of, all of my colleagues feel the sentiments that I have, that we respect the time and the recommendations of this body. So I'm for the annexation as it is, I believe this is, uh, could be seen as an isolated incident, or not, not the term, the best term, but an isolated situation or agenda item. And so, and I understand the consequences surrounding it, and then the uncle does own the majority of the land to the, what, right of this property, so, I'm, and then it does open up more opportunities for the property owners below your property and across the street to annex into the city in some, whatever way that that benefits them. However, since this is a recommendation to the city council, I do believe that some consideration could be given to some of the options that were recommended here tonight, such as making the, um, the amount of acres that's gonna be annexed in, just increasing that a little bit, but I don't know how this would go with the city council, and like I said, that I am for, you know, once you're in, you're in, so.
So, so while it's not in, in the city, it's still in our planning jurisdiction, correct, so. But to his point, if he did the whole thing, it would be R one and that would limit, see, see, the, the real issue is because of where it is, you're gonna have to be minimum one acre lots, you can zone it R one, you can zone it R three, it doesn't matter, there's gonna have to be one acre lots because they're in the, the, within one mile of Lake Tuscaloosa, which is the drinking water. So it's really almost a non-issue, as far as to go.
Well, I guess, looking more closely, one thing that says about opening it up to other area, growth areas, but in reality, that's not true, because you're really gonna open up to one more lot, and that's the lot to the south. Because the petitioner's saying he has no, no plans to
Okay, yeah.
Zone, rezone the other or annex the park, so you want to add another body, you add in one lot.
So, so, Bill, if they did, so let's say the person, the Deborah Neal or whatever, the person south, if they annexed in at some point, can you go across the road, or does that not, you can, you can go across, so that actually would open up south of the road, uh, you see what I'm saying?
Then, but then, okay, they'll, they'll open up two, two lots, because then there's no way to.
But, but, but like, if you come, let's say this Deborah, and I'm gonna keep calling her name because I'm looking at it on Land Glide, the, the box of seven acres just south, that would allow them to come south of the road, and then, I don't know what's going on, weight over, all, all this over here, south of the road, but it does open up the entire south of the road, as everybody's touching each other, if there, if there's a benefit to them, particularly because of schools, as that develops residentially.
Well, we've, you've got your work cut out for you.
We do, we do, but I appreciate everybody's comments, it, it helped.
Yeah, I hope that, I hope the staff will not advocate for any position, but at least be able to explain the different scenarios we were talking about, what Tim was just talking about, what others have talked about, as far as being an alternative idea, and, and they, they let them do as they wish, but.
Yeah, and to my point earlier, it is best practice to not do this.
That's all you can do, okay, so now, as far as, there's people that, on this, on this vote, we usually do a voice vote, do we recommend taking a roll call vote, is that necessary? I don't think, I think you'd have some yays and nays, and, oh, you got, at some point, you gotta be able to count even, right? Yeah, exactly, I mean, I think we should take a roll call, so, so I guess I'd ask for a, a motion for the annexation of eighteen twenty-five.
Motion?
So, all right, Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
No.
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 Yes.
No.
Have to.
Good luck.
All right, commission, we have another annexation request, that is AN nineteen twenty-five, annexing approximately four point five acres located at thirty-three eleven and thirty-three twenty-seven Hargrove Road East and thirty-seven twenty-eight Thirty-Fourth Avenue East. I can see we are just south of the interstate here, east of the Belk Center, I can see that property today does have some homes on those lots, and you can see, um, that, uh, area to be annexed in the blue hatchmark, uh, city limits in yellow. Uh, the city is pursuing an island annexation here, uh, this area is identified as a primary expansion area and framework, here are department comments. Uh, and just some context, I, I don't know if anyone on this board has seen, um, an island annexation, uh, so this is coming from the state code, uh, that municipalities may annex, um, islands that are less than fifteen acres and fully enclosed within city limits for more than a year, um, and this is kind of that, that whole, uh, law written out here. Uh, we did receive one public comment, do you have any questions for staff?
I've never seen one of these, when was the last annexation of this nature that was done by the city?
Last one submitted was in around two thousand, la, I think, I don't think that one went through, it was probably between ninety-six and ninety-eight.
Okay.
And then, for some reason, when the city stopped doing them. You want an explanation as to what they are?
Sure.
All right, it's, uh, state code, uh, that includes Tuscaloosa, uh, parcels of fifteen acres or fewer, enclosed within the corporate limits of the municipality for a period of one year or more. Annexation must be in the best interest of the public good and welfare of the municipality, it's effective following adoption, publication, and filing and probate.
So is this, this is an island annex?
Right. And the petitioner in this case is the, uh, planning department.
So will the petitioner please come forward and state their case?
I would say it's the city.
I'm sorry?
It's the city, I would say, we're, we're not bringing it forward as the planning division.
Somebody come up here and say, I'm about to say, name and address for the record, they buy.
So, obviously, annexations are not a engineering matter, but I do think this comment, uh, applies here. Nothing, if this is gonna get developed, it needs to be put on our public sewer system. And the only way that can happen, whether it ends up being commercial, residential, whatever, is for it to be in the corporate limits. So I guess from the engineering department, I'm advocating we annex this so that it can be properly developed at the time that development is proposed.
What, what's there now?
Houses, homes.
Homes, there's houses.
Homes, there's houses there.
For the, our last, staff remind everybody what, what's happened here the last couple of months with this parcel?
Right, so the past couple, or I don't know the exact dates, but
January, I think it's the first.
On two occasions, there've been an annexation and a rezoning request for the northern portion, portion of this. So this is all one lot and then you've got two lots here. So on these two lots here, we have seen a request for the commerc, or contractor offices. So that would be a rezoning to general commercial as well as an annexation because of course they need to connect to sanitary sewer.
So there's three lots.
Three lots.
And the lots one and two are owned by one individual.
Right.
And the lot to the south is owned by separate, or the same individual?
Separate.
So you've got two different property owners.
Right.
Now, were they notified of this annexation? So is there any legal requirement?
No, there's no legal and normally we would courtesy them a copy because they're the property owner. They have known about it and we have had correspondence with their attorney and with him directly today, or yesterday.
And they've objected, is that right?
Yes, they objected being annexed.
And just to also remind you how those votes went. Of course, the two, the two annexation requests were recommended for approval. But the two rezoning requests as part of, you know, what he brought for, what they brought forward, were recommended denial.
So the, the petition in January did not pass, or they withdrew, I was not here. They withdrawed or did they?
They just didn't pursue city council. They went back to the drawing board.
So they came back before us last month or the?
I think it was a few months ago, August, yeah.
Okay, and that one we did.
So a lot of the neighbors came out against it as well. It was the same kind of argument as the first one, I would say.
So in the January petition, lots of problems. Came back in August, attempted some improvements, still didn't pass.
Yeah, y'all did not recommend approval of the rezoning.
And there's another plan that possibly going to be submitted for this again?
Right, they're, I believe they're working on another project.
And that was probably going to be better or worse. Do we have any idea? What did they ask for last, the last, last time they?
Was it a storage unit?
Yeah, it was, well, so the last time they, they asked both times for contractors' offices.
Annexation and?
And a rezoning.
And a rezon. So they were annexing and bringing in as R1.
Right. And so it was the same request both times. It was just a different, you know, different concept of the same use.
Was it for several different people? Weren't, weren't there going to be several different businesses located in that building?
So the way that a contractor office works is, yeah, they'd have multiple tenants.
Was that the one that we were having problems with ingress and egress sort of? I mean, how they were going to get around it? I might be confusing it.
I don't.
I think this was the two-story office, two and three businesses. We didn't know what they would be exactly.
No, this was like.
I think it was the aesthetics of the building.
Roof's warehouses, it had tradesmen where they had the roll-up doors and small office area in there.
We did that one, but then I think they came back.
That was one, that was in August.
So, so you're saying that if, the, the city is somewhat petitioning because it's an island and needs to be under our purview. Right now, we're going to keep. And that's, that's, that's all legal based on what was up on the screen? On X number of months?
Right, one year, fifteen acres.
I, I get the, we had the legal right to do this, put on the city half for a second. But as we talk a lot up here about property owners having rights, I, I mean, I struggle with us, us just saying that we're going to do this as a vice property, not petition. Now, it should be the city, I agree with a hundred percent. But the way we're doing it, I just, I mean.
Yeah, I think all, the property owners who have done this have always been opposed. Otherwise, they would have just petitioned.
So when do we notify these property owners of this idea? When?
For council.
Oh wait, no, no, when, when would, when would these three property owners or two property owners notify of this intention to do this, to annex it? Like when? They haven't been. They haven't been? I thought I heard they had been and.
Well, they have not been sent a postcard, but we have been in communication with them since last week.
So for a week you've been talking to them?
What zoning are you recommending?
The R1.
We're not recommending any rezoning. So they're, we're recommending an annexation, which in turn would, they would come into the city as SFR1.
SFR1.
Was one of the, I mean, I'm just sitting here wondering how this, that development as it was proposed, how could they operate with the septic tank? With the septic system? I mean, if they can't hook onto our sewer, was that not one of our concerns?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
So if, if they propose a development, it's going to have to have a land development permit from my office. Our, the office of city engineer will have to approve the plan. We're not going to approve an on-site sewage disposal system for any form of development here with sewer adjacent to it. It won't happen.
They could propose storage units that do not require any on-site.
That wouldn't, those storage units that wouldn't have any sewers?
No office, no storage unit.
So, and what is the current zoning?
Wouldn't you require?
It's not zoned.
It's not in town.
So those storage could have no office at all and just be stored. And that's what we want to avoid, I get it.
But you would have, they would also, even if we annex it, it comes in at R1, they would have to request a rezoning change. And that's going to be a piece of property that's totally surrounded by residential. If I remember the map, yeah. Okay, look, it's totally surrounded. And now, I know we don't do, you know, spot zoning anymore, but that used to be spot zoning.
There is some commercial around the area. There is some commercial around the area.
Well, but it's.
I know, to the north.
A church.
Is that still in the county though? I mean, is that where the commercial is, is that?
I believe there's some commercial within city limits in this area.
I could, I could be okay with the annexation because the councilperson for this district, I guess it's District Seven? Well, yeah, this would be, will be annexed into the District Seven. District Six. So at that time, the residents and the councilperson would definitely have some input on the rezoning if that happens. Because when it's annexed in, it'd just be annexed naturally into R1, right?
That's right.
It would, it would come before us, where it goes, the council board, it would settle in the future, if it ever happens.
Do you, do you have any problem reading the letter from this property owner proposing? When you put it into the, I know there's a letter from the opposing. Do you mind reading it for the record? I've been, I had a citizen.
Quite extensive.
Well, before you read that, I do want to say, I don't remember there being, Ms. Prince, any egress and ingress issues, but I do remember there were some concerns about traffic on Hargrove Road in the traffic study. I think I do remember that clearly.
I think there was concern also about tapping into Thirty-Fourth Avenue as well.
This is it.
As far as the ingress, the whole thing.
Never mind, never mind.
It would be a while. Well, this goes to city council anyway, so.
And to Ms. Howard's.
We've, we've never had two more complicated annexations than.
Right.
I mean, this has been nuts.
To Ms. Howard's point, obviously the, the District Six representative is aware of this request. They're in support of the request going through to council. Otherwise, it wouldn't be in front of you guys today.
Anyone else have any more comments or thoughts? Anyone care to speak for or against while we collect our thoughts? All right, I'll say we discuss it one last time or we take a vote and move it on.
This is, this is all news to us, right? And I don't see any real urgency about it. Wondering if, why, if there's a way to take some time and look at it further.
You know, I guess the urgency would be this, is that this petitioner's come several times for his body and gotten rejected. And he's looking at a way to possibly do a storage without an office, which would be a big middle finger to this body and this staff. And this is a way to protect that from happening. I hate to say it that way, but that's probably the damn truth.
Into the, to the residents.
Into the residents.
To the residents.
I mean, I agree with it, it's, it's.
I spoke with Ms. Hegler's daughter on the phone and she seemed like she was not opposed of the, the annexation.
And that's the third property owner to this one?
The second property owner, the southern portion.
But she's probably about the same thing. She's probably going like, I'm okay with it because this guy's probably going to put a warehouse and no off, no, no bathrooms and then.
But to Mr. Wright, to your point earlier, just now, you know, it's not really necessarily about us or you guys and the whole middle finger to quote you.
Sure, come on, Zach.
It's also the, the, you know, y'all are looking at it as this perspective of the neighbor, neighborhood.
Listen, the guy owns the property, he's trying to do something with it, he's getting nowhere. And of course, last meeting we had a comment about, hey, we're not going to let him tap into the sewer. So he's like, okay, then I'll, I'll show you, I'll figure it out. And he's got a way to figure it out and nobody's going to like it.
Well.
Staff or us or the council.
That threat doesn't occur from time to time, it rarely does, it raises its head because people don't usually do what's in their highest and best use of a piece of property.
I, what?
I'm not saying it won't.
Is there an act, where's the access to the lot for you? Do we know? The bottom line? Oh, okay.
But Bill, isn't it in our planning jurisdiction also, even if they, or you're saying they can just go build many storages without coming up?
No water, yeah. No, no water, no, doesn't need to tap into sewer. I mean, so it's.
Who rents, who rents storage buildings?
The old chicken farm scenario we talk about all the time in the county. I mean, in the county, you can do anything you want to. That would be a chicken farm or a bunch of warehouses on there with no water.
I want to become a chicken farm.
Why's that going down, Stephen? You know, I can, I can wear both hats. I see the city hat, I see the property owner's hats. So anyway. Any last comments from me by the commission? If not, we're going to take a vote on it. All right, I think we need to take a roll call vote on this one as well. All right. You have a motion to take a vote on annexation?
Motion.
All right, Ms. Hornsby?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Was that a roll call vote, a roll call vote or was that for the annexation?
Yes.
Our commission, next up, we have a rezoning petition. That is Z twenty-four twenty-five. Longleaf Engineering petitions to rezone approximately point eighteen acres, located at eleven twenty-five Nineteenth Street from MR1 to MR2. You can see we're south of Fifteenth Street here near Central High School. I can see that property today does have an existing home in a shed located off the alley. You can see that zoning, it's MR1 on that block today. They'd like to rezone from MR1 to MR2 to build a duplex on the site. You can see this is the property from the front and just a, a side view of the property. Here is a conceptual site plan. They'd like to, to build that unit on the rear to make it a duplex. This is identified in framework as multifamily residential. That does allow attached residential development, so this request does conform to framework as well as the use. You can see that multifamily residential zoning here. You can see our permitted uses in MR2. As you can see in MR1, a duplex is also permitted. They are not meeting the lot standards in order to build a duplex, whether from MR1 or our non-conformity section in the code. So just to clarify that for you, we did receive one public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Pull, pull the line back up, the rendering that they had up there.
Yeah, I want to see that too, yeah.
What type of structure could they?
So I believe what they're doing is using the existing house and adding, oh, sorry, this top portion is the existing house and they want to add a second one that I believe will, you know, have access either off of here or off of here. So this will be one duplex and this will be one duplex.
Does it have to be fixed to the current structure?
Yes, they're going to, yeah. That's what I understand as to what they're trying to do. Like an addition, but as a dwelling, a separate dwelling.
And so the driveway goes all the way through the line?
Is it behind the property?
Two in the front, two in the back?
Yep, two in the back. What district is this? Sorry.
It's two, District Two?
Which two?
That's me, I believe. Is this District Two?
Yes.
I'd love your, your thoughts.
I'm not sure, we're, we're looking into it.
Okay, yeah, I believe so. But, okay, so that driveway, that driveway will be behind the, the proposed property. So the driveway is behind the house. No parking in the front. And this, this driveway comes all the way through to Nineteenth Street.
Right, so they'll have a, and the petitioner might be able to speak to the designer of the building.
Let's, let's hear that. Petitioner.
And it is District Two?
Yes.
Sharon Harrison's owner.
Good evening. Tom Sams with Longleaf Engineering, nineteen twenty-seven, Seventh Street. Yes, this is, this is an existing residence and Ms. Harrison was proposing to extend that residence to the rear and then extend the driveway to the rear as well. There would be two parking spots per unit, so two in the front and two in the rear. So one at the top and one at the bottom of the drawing.
So basically you're going to put a new, you're going to park in front. For the, for the front residence, there'll be a parking in the front.
Yes, sir, they have separate parking for the front and the rear.
The current driveway we saw a picture of is going to just be extended down.
Correct, the current driveway is shaded in gray there. It kind of stops right there now and then we would extend it the rest of the way to the bottom.
Pull back up to the shot of the house. Basically, that, the cars parked, they're going to be parking in front of that.
Bill, if you remember when we, when we increased the density in the box, we reestablished the front yard and put parking to the rear and everybody was wondering, although the density was increased, we, the streetscape was improved dramatically.
Okay, so.
To that point, they're, they're currently, you know, they don't have a garage structure now, so they currently park in the front. So that, that portion wouldn't change. We would just add parking to the rears.
That's not, Tim, that, that's kind of like, that's, that's an existing driveway. I wouldn't call that, you might call that parking in the front, but putting those two spaces up there, that's really parking in the front.
Sure.
I mean, that's like.
Can you circle where the, on the proposed lot, where the parking would be? Is it like right there in the corner coming off the street? Okay, so that's the parking for the existing building in that, okay. Got you, yeah, that.
What's on the alley and what's in the front, in the front yard?
Is there no room to put all four spaces in the back?
Looks like there is.
It's, it's possible. We could add the spaces in the back, you know, maybe a little more inconvenient for the front.
For the, for the existing house?
Right, yes, ma'am.
But not for the proposed house. Or what if we left it like it is for the existing house, but improved it to put the parking in the back on the proposed house? I'm sorry, could you hear me?
That, that's, I thought that's what the.
To put the parking on the back on the new lot?
Right.
Okay.
That, that's what, that's what we're proposing.
Okay, okay.
But you're saying leave the driveway though for the front instead of adding?
I guess, I guess kinda like just grandfathered in since it's already like, that's already existing, but I do like the, the idea of having the parking in the back.
But you could strike it, I mean, you could strike it because if you're giving them the right to increase the density and increasing the value of their property by virtue of doing so, reestablishing the front yards and, and doing something positive for the neighborhood would be a.
I would like it consistent.
You could put four parks in the rear and, and have them park, park them all to the, to the rear and make sure that maybe, maybe they have a five-foot tall fence at least so the headlights don't all shine into the, join in neighbor, to the rear's yard and then they all park to the rear and then you, then you can tell the neighbors that, yes, we did give them greater density, but we also started a press of a reestablishing front yard grass and that sort of thing, which we've won an award for that plan in the box.
Okay, yeah.
It's a lot wide enough. It's a lot wide enough to say park it all right now and go around with that parking in the rear.
Uh, y- yes, i- i- it is. There, there's, there's approximately 12 feet or so between the side of the house and the property.
If you're the, if you're the owner of the property, you're in the front, you're not gonna be real excited about parking in the back and walk up all the way to the front. And you're gonna, Tennessee's to park there where she is now. But then you're blocking the, you're in the back getting around there, they're gonna drive the yard.
I see what you're saying, yes. I don't think that would be an option for them to continue parking there because it would block the access to the rear.
That's why I said.
Yes, it wasn't, it's not enough room to.
You said 12 feet though, right?
Right, right.
And they're not.
Would you be able to, you know, have this one access or, I don't know, so that way she can still, or they can still use the two parking spots?
One hundred percent, yes.
Yeah.
I will also say that this is just conceptual, you know, they're not gonna be held to any of the site plan or anything like that.
You could baypark off that alley and get, and get five spots there.
I think there's a need to protect that, no parking in the front yard.
Yeah, I would like for us to keep that consistent and to say that present that we're keeping it consistent, we're increasing the, the value of the area.
I think we can work with staff and trying to get an acceptable layout there.
And as always, I, I'd really like to see what the conception is of what it's gonna look like and not just something that you're not involved in.
Yeah, it would be better if you, you forced them to park off the alley. I didn't see the alley, I'm sorry. And you baypark it off the alley and then you don't have, you don't have that car traffic down the side of the house, which could become dangerous.
Have a driveway on it.
Yeah.
I think their intent was to try to maintain some of that rear yard, you know, that's currently fenced in, but I mean, we can.
What, I'm sorry?
The, the rear yard's currently fenced back there, you know, and so you would kind of eliminate that.
Take up, you're gonna lose a lot of the backyard if you're parking in the back.
Well, how many?
I'm not saying they would be against it, I'm just saying, I think that was their thinking initially.
Actually, uh, parking space is, is 22 feet, so you can get some idea about how deep if you bayparked off the alley, you would still have basically where that parking, that parking design is, that would be, could be yard and you would get rid of this parking in the front and it would probably be an improvement overall. Now, it's gonna create some tra, is this an alley that, that's traverse generally?
I don't, I don't know what the current traffic, uh, is on there.
Some of our alleys are not.
Oh, that's a good alley.
Yeah, it is, huh.
And this is a well.
What's right over there?
With your city right away, you'd have actually more space and, uh.
Well, no, you could come off of 12.
Nineteen thousand.
Is this the only, uh, multifamily?
I believe it's something on 18th Street, right?
If you go back to, go back to that area.
It's directed to the south of them.
MR10, yeah, and across the street.
A- a- and to the north across the street.
To the north, okay.
I think we just had the alley repaved. So what I would like to see, no, we just got the alley paved, I believe, but what I would like to see is some renderings, our conceptual drawings and then another design of the park.
Okay. Wanna push it? We can, we can table it for 30 days if that suits you guys.
We're just trying to make you some money.
Yeah. I think the council person for this, appreciate that, she said it for the record, so. Continuance request?
Yes, sir.
All right, Commissioner, for us, we have a continuous request for Z 2425. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, aye, say it. Thank you, Tom.
All right, commission, we have our preliminary plats, starting off with S 8925, Cloverdale at Hackberry, a resurvey of Lot 43 Cloverdale and unplatted land. This is consisting of one lot on approximately .95 acres located at 1405 and 1431 Hackberry Lane, Council District Four. You can see we're north of 15th Street here near the bread factory. Uh, you all saw this one last month for a rezoning on the southern portion of this property. Uh, now they're back before you tonight for the subdivision. So you can see that existing configuration here today, there's some commercial in the south, um, a residence on the north lot. They'd like to remove that lot line, create one lot as you can see here, um, and then develop some triplexes as you can see in this, um, uh, conceptual site plan. We do have one variance request for right-of-way dedication. We did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering on the right-of-way dedication?
So we are, we are in favor of it and it's not a complete waiver of the right-of-way dedication, but we've worked with the engineer on what we can acquire and kinda stair steps through the development plan.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Mr. Chairman, members of commission, Al Cavanaugh with Cavanaugh's Engineering, resident and Chase Adcox. And this is the one which y'all saw 30 days ago for a, for a rezoning. The, um, as Leo just told you most everything about it, we're removing that one interior lot line. There was originally a planted lot, part of, part of the Cloverdale subdivision that has the, the one remaining small house on it, so we're removing that lot line.
That's a little closer to mine.
I'm sorry?
You can get a little closer to mine.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, uh, so we're removing that one lot line so we can, you know, have four buildings on the one parcel. It's slightly less than an acre, .95 acres. Uh, four buildings, total of 54 beds, so we're well under the density, uh, meeting all the setbacks. Uh, as City Engineer just spoke, uh, we are dedicating right-of-way that eventually gets back to the existing right-of-way. The Lot Two at the top of the screen there was recently redeveloped, so it's new, the, across the street to the north, there's a recent redevelopment. And then the railroad crossing, of course, it's established with the paving and sidewalk, so we're, uh, kinda stair stepping back in in a way that makes sense for the future. We are part of the, uh, site plan, we're reconfiguring the intersection there, so you get away from the odd intersection that's there. Now we get a full four-way intersection. So we're, we're aligning, we're aligning with 14th Street. Currently, the commercial driveways up here creates kind of an odd traffic configuration, so we are improving that.
I'm sorry, can you go back? Did, did you say you're eliminating the four-way traffic?
Actually, you can kinda see it there. Currently, these center lines don't really line up. And so when, when, when we get through, uh, the, the center lines of those streets will, will align. It, that's a, can be a difficult traffic area and that alignment improves that.
It's not a turn lane, is it a turn lane?
No, no. Now, as to what could happen in the future, there would be right-of-way for there to be a turn lane, but I don't, I don't know if there are any future plans for improvement there.
Like a lot, a lot of cars coming out of that little piece of property now. They're gonna be trying to go away from campus towards 15th, they're gonna have a high getting out of there.
So Bill, I'll point out, there is a center turn lane there today, it's a.
There is, yeah.
Directional turn lane for both the north and the southbound traffic to use. Three-lane section.
That kinda starts the turn.
So that's, that's actually the, that's actually the current striping right now.
Well, it's part of that, but really it's, you know, once you cross the railroad tracks, or I guess all the way down Hackberry, it's got a center, the center lane that you can turn left on and turn right on.
Would it not be wise for the city to make that an actual turn lane into this?
Well, you've also got an access point into the shopping center.
Did we see the area?
As well. Yeah, let's go back to the area.
Okay, so the road, okay.
You got the turn lane going to the 4th and 5th Street. Right there where Hackberry Lane, that's where you start the turn lane going. L N is right here.
There's an access where I'm trying to draw all these things, it's not, not working very well. So there's an access there, but if someone was northbound, they would need to turn left.
And I think we should make that a dedicated direction. I think it should stay as it is, uh, today. You can turn right or left in that center lane.
That makes sense.
It's hard to see the striping on that, but that center turn lane actually is striped today.
Be turning right. They get the block. All right, we'll see motions. For anybody, any guy more questions for a petitioner? Thank you, Mr. Cavanaugh. Anyone here to speak for or against? Anyone signed up for this petition request? Okay, having heard none, commission, before us, we have S 8925 Cloverdale at Hackberry with one variance request of right-of-way dedication, which engineering has worked it out with the petitioner and has no issue with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion approved.
Mr. Rumsey? I'm sorry, uh.
About to say my name, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion approved.
All right, next up, we have S 9125, Arcadia number nine, a resurvey of lots 72 and 73, Arcadia number five, consisting of two lots on approximately .93 acres located at and around 72 Arcadia Drive, Council District Five. You can see we're in the Alberta area, just west of Arcadia Elementary School near Five Points. You can see there's two lots here today, um, one of those is vacant, one has an existing home. You can see they'd like to adjust that lot line, getting ready to build on that corner lot. You can see that existing lot line here just shifting this way a bit. Uh, and here's that plat without contours. We do have two variance requests, we did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering on the variance request.
We concur with those requests.
Thank you. Petitioner?
Kevin Hinkle, Montgomery Hinkle, Inc., professional land surveyors, 203 Harbor Road East, representing the petitioner. Ms. Jordan owns both lots and was approached by, uh, somebody wanting to build a house on the vacant lot. She agreed, but she'd like to move the lot line over to give her a buffer beside her driveway and get another home built in a desirable neighborhood.
What's that make, second lot size, acre-wise?
It, 17,860 square feet, half acre.
Any other questions for a petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against this petition request? Commission for us, we have, uh, S 9125, Arcade number nine. City two lot subdivision, two variance requests, engineering has no issues with. Have a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Hornsby.
Yes.
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 Motion approved.
All right, next up, we have S 9325, resurvey of lots nine through 16, Block 89 TCIL subdivision, consisting of one lot on approximately 1.47 acres located at 1,000 through 1,016 13th Street and 1211 11th Avenue, Council District Four. You can see we're just south of Tutweiler and the Evergreen Cemetery. Uh, you can see there's multiple homes and lots here today. Uh, what they'd like to do is remove all those lot lines, create one large lot here. You can see that without contours and with that, uh, build duplexes on that lot. Uh, we do have one variance request, we did not receive any public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering?
We don't have any issues with that request.
You petitioner?
Commission, I'm Robert Martin with Duncan Coker Associates. Um, this is just a lot consolidation for construction of a series of duplexes. Be happy to answer any questions. They'll look exactly like the existing two that are on the corner there, at the southwest corner.
Same property owner?
Yes, sir. And the only purpose of getting rid of these lot lines is so we can construct the parking more efficiently. Um, instead of having a driveway for each duplex, we'll just have three driveways coming off the alley.
Off the alley, that's good, okay. Any other questions for a petitioner?
Yes, sir, that's dumpster enclosure.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? Having heard none, commission, for we have S 9325, the resurvey of lots nine through 16. We had a right-of-way dedication, variance request, engineering has no issues with. Do I have a motion and a second?
Motion. Second.
Mr. Rumsey?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion approved.
All right, next up, we have S 9425, a resurvey of part of lots 27 through 29, Block B, W E Bowers, consisting of one lot on approximately .24 acres located at 912 21st Avenue East, Council District Five. See, we're in the Alberta area, just south of University Boulevard East here near the tennis center. You can see that property today is vacant and what they'd like to do is remove these two, uh, remnant lot lines. And we did receive, um, a revised plat since the packets were posted, this is what you saw in the packet. You can see that revision here to get that, uh, radius in the northeast corner. Uh, you can see with contours, without. Uh, we do have two variance requests, we did receive one public comment. Do you have any questions for staff?
Engineering?
We're okay with those requests.
Petitioner?
Members of commission, Chris Centel, Centel Engineering. Uh, this very well explained, we're eliminating two lot lines to make, consolidate the lot. Uh, and the city requested a radius on the northeast corner and we gave it to them.
Guess no one had any questions for you? Hang tight, don't be hurt.
Do you have any questions? I'm hungry.
Any questions for a petitioner? Y'all know where this is?
Was the public comment was about sidewalks?
Yes, our waiver for sidewalks along the east and north is because we, we, we feel like with the, due to the terrain, it's such a steep slope that we would not meet ADA compliance with sidewalks.
Okay.
Sidewalk from nowhere, right?
And there's no sidewalk currently anyway. There's a house there, there used to be a Boy Scout, Troop 89's Boy Scout, Scout Hut used to be there. Um, and there's, you can see the shadows on the north side, there's a retaining wall and that's, that's already in place.
You're gonna put two structures on this lot?
Yes, ma'am.
You can, we can do that? Is that new?
It's an excess, one of them's an accessory structure.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Yeah, there, there's a square footage limitation on accessory structures, but yeah. Yeah, there, there's a square footage limitation on accessory structures, but yeah, we, 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 our, the developer's been doing it throughout Alberta City.
Okay.
Build two houses on one lot, right?
Are there sidewalks on twenty-second Street?
Uh, tw- twenty-first? Uh, there's some, there's some current sidewalks, uh, I, I, I don't even know, is there not, I'm, I'm not sure there is.
Public comment is what I was looking at.
Yeah, I, there's maybe some sidewalks on that development right there, but that would be it, that's the only thing on that street.
Any, any other questions for petitioner? Thank you. Anyone care to speak for or against? Anyone's here to speak for or against? All right, Commissioner, for us, we have S ninety-four, twenty-five, the resurvey of lots twenty-seven, twenty-nine, block B W E Bowers, two variant requests, Engineering has no issues with, have a motion and a second.
Motion, second.
Ms. Hornsby?
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, motion approved. Staff, can we get these computers fixed? If not, you better bring the Zeus next time, my next one be like.
I wasn't aware that they were broken until.